Yeah, he said one duck.
Did the agenda change at all? No, it's in here somewhere. All right, the meeting will come to order. It's a regular meeting of the East Adam Planning and zoning commission, June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. We have the attendance, please.
Curry Brownell, absent. James Curtin.
Here.
Rich Patnelli, not here yet. Justin Anderson.
Here, sir.
Bernard Gillis.
Here.
Ed Govins, absent. Louis Southcroft.
Here.
Susan Kinsman.
Here.
Deborah Langman. Tony DeMe.
Here.
Okay. So, well, we have three absences, but I don't know where we are with the shuffling of people, so. Okay, so just start with Susan, you can vote for Curry. And Deb for Rich until he gets here, I guess, and Tony for Ed. See what happens. Okay, so the minutes of the previous meeting, everybody got a chance to look at it. I did read them and I didn't see anything.
I didn't get those in my package. May twenty-third.
Anybody else that was missing them or saw? Give everybody a chance to take a quick look, see if you got any. I didn't have anything, actually. Anything from you?
Not for me, no.
How about you, Lou? Anything on the minutes?
No, I'm reading it for the second time, I haven't found anything.
Okay. Tony?
No, nothing. I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, most have been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Bernie, anything?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay, thank you. We have minutes approved. Bills.
So I have two. Haller and Sage for general legal, hundred and twenty dollars. And Nathan L. Jacobson Associates, general consultation about the Cumberland Farms site with Roger Never got a hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
All right, two bargains, huh?
Here we go.
Those must have been pretty short conversations for, on all of this stuff for a hundred and twenty bucks.
Well, it's.
Are any of these fees attributable to the applicants for these property?
Uh, the, I don't know, one will be, yes.
The Cumberland Farms one will be?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, because the neighbor is the one who brought that up.
Well, this actually had to do with stormwater and how to.
Oh, that's a good one, okay.
So that'll be part of a special exception.
That's still on wetlands?
It is withdrawn from ZBA.
Oh, ZBA.
Yeah, so that they could get legal representation.
Okay. All right, so anybody further discussion on the bills? Everybody good?
Motion to approve the bills?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Bills are done. All right, ready? Okay. Rich would be dead there. Filling in for you, okay.
I can leave?
Good, but you won't.
Shouldn't have come in.
Okay, under site plan review, we had application twenty-three oh seven, one twenty-eight Lakeshore Drive. Pierre and Penelope Hill, property owners and applicants, site plan review, application for conversion of seasonal year-round map eighty lot three oh three.
What do you got? Did everybody get a full-size one or is this?
We, I did, but I don't mind, yeah.
Okay. All right. The applicant is here. This house was formerly a cottage. And I think if I correct, an oak tree fell through it. So it has been totally reconstructed, meeting the building code for today.
Oh, cool.
The site plan is an as-built by Dutch and Associates. It has a, you know, full survey, septic proposal well site. And I have a review letter from the Chatham Health District.
Good.
You're reading the record. Dear commission members, this office has reviewed the B one hundred A application submitted by Pierre Hill dated June seventh, two thousand twenty-three for conversion of a seasonal to year-round three-bedroom structure. The existing septic system installed in February two thousand twenty-two was sized for a three-bedroom. It was installed and inspected and approved. A permit to discharge was issued on three-one-twenty-two. The existing septic system is properly sized based on existing number of bedrooms. The proposed conversion is approved with the following conditions. Specifically, the existing public water surface is to be removed. The applicant owner must apply for and receive a well exception to section nineteen dash thirteen dash B fifty-one M B of the Connecticut Department of Public Health. And the home is to remain in three bedrooms. Any modifications, the existing plan exists, increase in footprint and/or bedrooms may require the septic system to be redesigned. And the site plan modified to avoid the conversion of the property. Kind regards, Rachel Colini, registered sanitary. And we also have the return receipts from.
Okay, you've got all those. Or anybody with any comments or questions from the applicant?
There were a couple. I'm sorry, a couple of background questions. One, why isn't there a reserve field shown on this?
Doesn't have to when they do an as-built.
Okay.
Yeah, they did test pits for it, so it's out there.
So it's on the record.
And there's plenty of room outside of the well radiuses to deal with that.
And flood zone C, X, what is that?
That's, it's still uplift, that's the five-hundred-year plus.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they do have to label it on this?
Charlie did it for insurance purposes. So that he doesn't get cleaned out when they come and tell you that you're in the flood zone A and B.
I don't think that could flood, but yeah.
Yeah. But they see it on the map, the flood insurance rate, and it's a thick band on a tiny map, and they just assume. So it's better to have it on the map for future insurance purposes.
Lou?
Yeah, I have a question on the west end of the property. What's a quarter meter water gate, what is that?
That's, there's public water right now.
It's public, so the well is.
It's seasonal.
It's a potential well site, so.
Potential, right. Because all of the seasonal cottages up there are on the water system. And this was seasonal, is right now.
So they're gonna get a water supply, they're not gonna use the well?
They're gonna have to.
They're gonna have to use the well because the water supply is seasonal.
Yeah, get shut off.
Yep. Yep.
The water supply is getting moved, though, right?
Correct. So they don't want any cross-connects.
Right, you can't have both.
Yep.
Anybody else?
General question. I glanced through the most recent newsletter. I thought the president had said there was gonna be a study on the sewer systems and the lake capacity to handle issues like that.
What president?
Of Lake Hayward.
Never happening.
Oh, no, I thought it was a study going on.
See, here's the problem with this. People come up with these ideas and they don't give a phone call and say, has there ever been a study conducted? And I could say, yes. Has there ever been a cost estimate attributed to it? And I could say, yes. And have we ever ruled on this? And that's why the WPCA, which Rich is also on, we've declared those is. Yeah, I'm gonna throw you under the bus, too. You know, is that we got is a sewer avoidance because costs are prohibitive and there's no real benefit. I've been at this for thirty years now where I'd say, how'd that sewer system work out for Poketypog? Where you took all the water out from wells, you put it in the sewer system, then you ran it to the Connecticut River. So now poor Poketypog has no recharge. And they have wonderful algae rooms. So, no, they should probably call up and we could give them the background history on all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that led into my follow-up question is that was there a concern that there might not, they might not be able to handle? If everybody decided to ultimately convert to full-time, would that be an issue?
No, because everyone is built to the code and it has enough renovation. And if it's close to wetlands, my wetlands commission has actually asked for renovation calculations if it's within the upland review. And a good engineer can provide those things to make sure that it's adequate. So not only do you have the public health code, but you have, if it's close to wetlands, the wetlands commission, we standard operating procedure, nutrient analysis, which.
It's coming up with the next app.
Yeah. And I had a couple that couldn't, they were denied, so.
I just noticed that in the newsletter.
Yeah, I did get that, they don't send that to me, they should.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions?
And the minimum lot area, are we adding to a non-conforming use?
We actually changed the regulation to allow that to happen, so it's not non-conforming. So it's, I mean, it's, you know, we changed the regulation to say if you can meet the public health code, not just a half acre, you know.
Yeah, we did it because if you had a vacant, you could meet it, people could build a year-round house. So we're going like, okay, but the existing can't use it for year-round, so that's why we made these changes a couple of years ago.
And because it was a lot size minimum, I think.
Yeah, we did for conversions, but not for people, if you could meet the whole code, you could build a year-round house on an undersized lot. And sort of saying, why are these people being denied? So that's why we switched it a few years ago. It's only a couple of years ago. Anything else, Rich?
No, it's an as-built.
Since you're on the WPCA, I thought you might have a comment, no?
Just kidding.
Want to talk about the cemetery committee, too?
I didn't know about that. Got thrown under the bus for that, too?
Got buried.
Right, are there any other conditions besides Chatham Health?
That was it.
No correspondence?
No correspondence.
Anybody want to make a motion relative to this? Pardon?
Is this a new doc or what? I saw a doc on here. Chatham.
Chatham.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I just ask about that doc, the doc showing up on the blue?
Does have a doc showing on the plan.
It's on the plan?
Yeah.
He probably took a look at the mastercard and what was previously.
And what previously, when we bought the house, it was about.
Oh, I see, all right.
But that guy, it was a wood dock, and then it disappeared.
It's been. Well, but that also helps you for demonstrating the record if you want to apply for one for the wetlands, it's there.
They have.
Because they did the base document before they did anything as the tree was through the building.
So the doc as shown on the map was some previous existing. All right.
I just didn't know if it needed.
No, I saw it on there, yeah. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, all right. Enjoy your year-round use.
Watch out for those fallen trees.
I have my packet, I have the agenda. Oh, it's right there, on top.
Lots of consonants in there.
Thank you.
Ours are next.
Okay, Jim, what do you got for home occupations, minor applications?
So we've got a minor application, photography. Most of the stuff's done going to somebody's home or to destinations, taking pictures. Few would be at the, actually at the house, but very minor, it seems, from the narrative. Very few deliveries. So I think this one falls under a minor aspect. They've put together a narrative, filled out the application. They're off the road quite a ways. And it's only using a small portion of the house.
My.
Eight.
Eight?
Yep.
Anybody with any questions for Jim on this one? Sides of the obvious.
Very thorough.
Pretty minor.
Pronounce her last name, Jim?
Lewis Nowitzki, huh?
Wazdowski. Not bad, huh?
Yeah.
Takes a Polack to know one.
That's a wild guess.
Anybody? No, it seems pretty straightforward. What do you think, Lou?
Mine, you're up.
Okay. Bernie, you're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect, and I'll sign the.
Yeah, make a motion that we accept. As a minor application.
Okay, motion been made.
I'll second it.
Seconded, okay. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay.
No, we voted on those things, I thought that was just.
You know why? Because you got to sign it here, so I think we started doing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It can't hurt.
No, I know.
I think that was just mostly so we see, that we know we saw it. Doesn't slide by without us knowing.
Today is the six twenty-seven. All right, and any, no other home occupations?
Nope. Got back to us.
Under discussion, the number one, the first one is the update of the adopted gateway standards.
So they just had a public hearing, incorporated some new lighting stuff, so I'll blend that, bring it back to everybody. And when we're holding a public hearing on some other regulation change, we can fold the two together.
Now, Brant's comment was that you should go and present it to them, are you doing that?
Yeah, so I, yeah.
Okay.
But that's only on the building height, the rest is.
Yeah, I know, on the things that we were discussing, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Anybody else with comments about these issues or standards they have?
Most of the lighting things that they put in, we've already had in our.
In our regulations.
So.
No, no issues.
So what are we, what are we, what are we talking about?
So the, the building height, I've got to go back down and explain to them that how, you know, a six pitch doesn't work. How, you know, walkout basements and all that, and how to use the four corners like the architects and the building officials does. So I have to set up a time, but finding times is, you know, a real treat, so it'll get there eventually. Talked about that.
You say him, not Torrance.
So who's, who did they, did they hire anybody yet? To Torrance's spot?
Um, I.
I don't think they have, right?
Susan is acting, I guess.
Acting, yeah, but that wasn't the full plan, was it? I didn't think so, so I was kind of waiting for that to happen, too. And then you got to let it get settled in before you beat them up on everything, so. But we can do the other definition changes, those things that are in there that make sense.
Well, maybe the new person will know all these things and just go, oh, yeah, there you go.
Well, but it takes more than that. It then goes back to Gateway and explains to them.
Well.
And I've had, you know, the fact that we got an exemption for our area, I made a great presentation. They agreed with us, and I actually said to Essex, you know, you probably should think about doing this yourself. And they were like, dead set against it. Even though they approved it for us, dead set against it. And I said, you have three and a half-story buildings in there.
On the waterfront.
On the waterfront, yeah, on the waterfront, in Essex Village. So if.
I know.
A vacant lot goes up, you can only do two and a half stories, where you could match the architecture.
Not sure what they're worried about with some of this is.
But, so it takes, takes time, yeah.
Okay, anybody else with a gateway comments, or we'll move on to the farm stands versus farm stores.
So here's my recommendation. The ag commission hasn't had a chance to meet. I don't think EDC is, has, I'd like to be able to send out an email to ag, EDC, ours, and maybe a couple local farmers to, you know, get involved in a subcommittee, because I think that's the only way they're gonna move this forward. Go through a lot of that stuff. Because if they don't meet and they don't talk and they don't report back to us, we're still sitting here. And so if that works, I could kick that out tomorrow and say, you know, and let you guys, between now and next meeting, which two want to, you know, jump in and volunteer to be part of that.
I'm not saying work.
Want to be on another subcommittee?
You know.
I think Lou's looking lonely.
So apparently somebody kicked his hornet's nest, that's why they're fucked.
Well, yeah, well, and it needs to be adjusted. There needs to be, you know, some thought put into it. And, yeah, they kicked the hornet's nest by not doing what they're supposed to.
Opening up a supermarket.
Yeah, you can't be selling sodas, ice cream, chips, soaps, toilet paper. It's not a convenience store. So, but on the other hand, some of these things that are out there, I mean, you know, and it's a decision that everybody's got to make together. And it's got to actually come back here for an actual public hearing. But if somebody was selling something in the form of textile that said, I bought my whatever, such, such farm, but a hat or whatever, you know? Is that the end of the world? Maybe not, but that's a group discussion. But I think, you know, EDC should be involved, not an ag commission, obviously, involved.
So I agree with the boards, and, you know, by virtue of being on the board, we're supposed to be representing the town. I don't know if it's a balanced board if we invite the farm representatives there. We're gonna get one side of it, we're not gonna get the people who don't want this.
Yeah, does that have to be a public?
That should be a public, they, they.
Well, there's gonna definitely be, it's definitely, they're all gonna be public meetings.
Okay, but if we're forming, so the farmers then can show up and the other people, you know, the interested parties can show up. I don't think we should put farmers as representatives on the subcommittee.
So they would be in the public forum situation, they would just have an open allotted time to comment as opposed to being a part of.
I got your point. All right.
I don't know, who's best to talk about what they view.
Well, they, it will be a, if you have a subcommittee meeting, you could always have a public session as part of the.
Well, you will have public sessions, because they're always public, so.
Right.
They're all gonna be on.
Can they request input from the affected businesses prior to the?
Well, I think it's an ongoing, you know.
Yeah, we advertise and invite interested parties to show up.
Invite emails prior to.
I mean, all subcommittees I've been on, they're public, nobody ever shows, but they're public.
But they're public, yes.
So let's go over the, just for, one of the groups you wanted, you wanted ag commission members, somebody from the ag commission is supposed to be on this, and who else? Ag commission, who else?
EDC.
Okay, EDC, okay.
PNC.
And PNC.
Yeah, and the regional planning agency said that they may have some interest, so they can be invited for discussion.
Okay, so River Cog.
Health Department.
Health Department said they wanted to, you know, be notified what was going on.
They would review whatever we said, but.
Yeah.
They're not, I don't.
But, I mean, we're in direct communication as to what yes and no is to certain things. I mean, there's some real hard no's that have to be followed, so that's easy. So.
Okay.
If that works, I can kick it out to, you know, the chairmen and say, look, you know, bring this to your group and see if we can get some volunteers. Because if these committees don't report, we'll still be here in November saying, well, they haven't met, they haven't given us back any feedback to the draft.
I mean, this is, because once we form the subcommittee, the subcommittee can discuss the obvious issues of, okay, what zone is a farm store gonna be okay? Because, you know, that's the argument about, these show up everywhere, which we've always said is fine, but once you start selling toothpaste and those other things.
I think the inventory is something we want to look at, and I think the size of the farm. I'm not sure if it's a zone or size of the farm.
It can be that, too, so maybe it depends where you are.
Well, I've got twenty acres in an R two, probably could put a store on, you know, but.
Yeah, but, you know, residential is supposed to be resident, I don't know whether.
But the farms aren't, and they're all over.
And it's also two is what does everybody as a group think is appropriate in each of these places.
Yeah, I'm more interested in the.
The products.
Inventory.
Yep.
So do we have a number in mind? Seventy percent has to be.
No, well, that's kind of why I want to bring it as a subcommittee, and they can report back to you, so we're not, because we're sitting and waiting for the two other groups to give us an answer. And the longer we wait, the longer we'll be sitting here, you know, we're not getting any guidance, so.
So both of these groups, you already contacted ag, right?
I sat down with ag and, you know, they were supposed to meet twice since, then they have. So I kind of want to force the issue.
No, I mean, if they're not gonna be participators.
I've gotten feedback, Bob at the last meeting said that might not be a bad idea, but he hasn't given me feedback as to who would do that from his committee. And I have been already told that one of the ag commission members is interested.
Okay, being involved, okay.
So at least get them to show up, because they're not making quarts and things like that, and it's summertime, and I get it, and people are doing things, but, you know. We put it out there and now it's kind of stagnating.
Okay, so is everybody okay with Jim contacting all these and trying to get put together something? So do we have anybody off the top of our head?
I think Ed mentioned he was interested. I think Ed was interested.
I think it's long overdue.
I think so. We'll show him taking a couple weeks off. I think he's got plenty of time on his hands.
What I always do is volunteer the person who's missing.
I'll just congratulate you.
It'll be like the cemetery, oh, I am, huh?
We are gonna need more than one person, though. I mean, this is three groups, maybe River Cog's only gonna send one person if they send anybody.
If they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or they might just say, send us the, you know.
Yeah, just keep us updated. But that would mean two people from ag. Two people from EDC, two people.
I'll do it, but I am friends with Roxanne, so I don't know if there's a conflict there.
Well, we all know everybody, I mean, I know Roxanne too, but so what? I mean, it's just a matter of, nobody's saying what they're doing is bad, we're just saying. And you might recommend something, and everybody goes, no, we don't agree.
Okay.
So, we've got one. Okay.
So Jim, you have the regs from all the surrounding towns and how they address this issue?
They don't, that's the problem.
They don't?
Yeah, I mean, I actually look at it and think that we have an opportunity to write a template for the other towns to grab a hold of, because they're all, they got more loopholes in them than you could shake a fist. And I think I sent that out with you in packets months, a couple of months ago about what the other towns had, and they were very, very slim.
Yeah.
Very slim. Some of them are really good about things like fifty percent, seventy percent, sixty percent, that they're firm about. But, you know, and some are firm about ours operation, so it's kind of like, all right, take the best out of six or seven regulations out there, but there's some things beyond that.
The thing is about percentages and stuff, I mean, you got to go there and take an inventory and start calculating the percentage of the, I mean.
Arbitrary.
It's.
It's tough.
Difficult, anyway, I would think they enforce of any sort, but, I mean, it's a start, but.
But even if you don't stringently enforce it, it gives you a mechanism to fight when it turns into.
Way too much.
A convenience store.
Neon lights, yeah.
Yeah. Like, okay, like, like the storage that we had on Smith, right? I mean, it wasn't bad, but it was just in a bad spot, and we had the mechanism of, you have a home business, you got to move it.
So is the focus of this regulation to protect public health and safety because of unregulated?
Well, that's, that's the first one.
Or is it just?
No, we found some of that, so that's part of it. You know, you can't be selling bone broth when you don't have a commercial kitchen. Commercial kitchen to operate out of it. Um, the second part was, you know, impact the neighborhoods as far as, you know, what are we doing here and is this gone beyond? Because technically, right now, all they're allowed to do technically is way it's set up is vegetables from their property. And nothing else and, you know, so we've gotta, you know, look at it and say, okay, you know. Is there some things out there that could be for added value or not? And so that's kind of the discussion. Yeah, the health, safety, welfare and first thing is, yeah, okay, you you can't be selling that. You can't be doing spared meals. We're not doing that. You know, that kinda got the health district involved and. They gave out the big no.
I think we've got some obvious no's, but then we got a lot of gray areas where maybe that would be okay. And that's the part that I think we're gonna have this.
Yeah, the River Music Festival is coming up and I know, you know, some people like to get little box snacks.
That ain't happening anymore.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's done.
It's popular though.
Yeah, I know it's popular, except that we didn't know about it until we went on the webpage and said, what?
Right. Give me a heads up, it's coming soon.
They're selling packaged food and they're not supposed to do that, I mean.
Yeah, out of the house. No.
Anyway.
No.
Okay, so between now and the next meeting, we'll come up with one more volunteer, somebody who just can't wait to get involved.
No.
Gubbins. Tell him he's volunteered.
Let's see, a hand raise?
Highly recommended.
Wait, 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 here we go.
I'm I'm writing his name down right here. Jim, you can send out a little notice there that you have.
Well, congratulations. Don't ever miss a meeting again.
Yeah, we told you not to skip that.
I'm glad I decided to stay.
He used to have a bidet at Woodbury, so he's like.
You know, and and all honesty though, he did run that that little shop, so he had a little, little business operation going, so.
Okay, I guess we're all in favor of you contacting these other agencies and let's see if we can put together a, you know.
Yep. I'd like to just one general question before we move on. On page five, under permitted uses, we have hobby farms listed. We have farms with large body animals.
Yeah.
We have ag uh, intensive commercial.
Yeah.
And accessory uses to agriculture.
Yeah.
How do we know which? Which of these farms fall under which category?
We're gonna have to decipher.
Yeah. When it comes to acreage, location, zone, that's all those discussions. With separate.
Yeah.
Um. I mean, the intensive agricultural things that we had and we did that in a reaction to the guy with the chickens. Twenty thousand chickens on two acres, you know, of his base, you know.
We already had that.
Yeah, we showed up overnight. Congratulations. Um, but it's, yeah, well, that's kinda weeded out and strengthened our own regulations at the same time.
Okay. Moving on. All right, land use administrator report, what do you got, Jim?
Well, the only thing is that it'll be on the agenda for next month is kind of the review of the. East Adam Village Plan. You have one webpage, look, I am not gonna, I Eddie killed me if I printed the eighty-four pages that were there. So between now and then, you do that so we can, you know, have that discussion. Uh, the other thing is, is that we may actually have a prospective buyer for Society Hall.
Really, yeah?
Really?
Okay.
Huh?
What's Society Hall?
Society Hall.
You can ask somebody.
Do you know where Broom Road is? Do you know where Broom Road comes down into the village from Mary Ellen Clink's house and all that?
Miller Antiques.
Right next to the old sweet shop location. That's Broom. It's right to the right of that.
It used to be.
On one forty-nine.
Right on one forty-nine where it comes down.
It used to be the Mason's Hall and actually the upstairs of the, it's got a domed roof. It it goes actually into what would have been the.
That was a Mason's building.
It was a Mason's building, yeah.
It's not listed on the market though officially, right?
There's a sign up.
You know where the ice cream shop used to be in the village?
Yeah.
Right now it's storage for antiques.
It's got the stone wall with the big wheel. There we go.
I don't think I've ever looked up. I've, you know, been looking at like all the antiques thrown out there.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So. Never been in there.
So that's, you know, on the market. We did walk through the building, official and I did walk through the prospective buyer.
Nice.
So.
Um, one thing, just while we're on that subject of redevelopment agency, they did get the, apparently we got an approval for the grant. For reassessment, so that's a couple hundred thousand coming in.
Oh.
Supposedly got approved.
Yes.
We got an email on that, right?
I got an email on it too, yeah.
Did you get a grant for remediation?
Uh, it's for reevaluation and assessment and then some of the money can be used on and on, depending on how much you spend for that. But we have to do some research on exactly what is there and what the limits of it are, because there's more testing has to be done. So that's gonna.
So it pays for some.
Some of the money's gonna go there and then on it goes.
Okay.
So that gives us a little more ability to do something.
But it's for environmental remediation.
Pardon?
The grant is for environmental remediation.
Yes, it's.
Part of it.
Part of it. Well, I mean, it's for.
So wait, assessment. So not not financial assessment, environmental assessment.
Right.
I guess we need clarification.
The assessment of exactly what's there.
I was thinking it's worth two million dollars.
No, no. Environmental assessment.
No, it's a, it's a couple hundred thousand, so we we should.
How much is it?
Couple hundred grand. That's what we asked for, so I assume they gave us what we asked for. I don't know that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good news.
But anyway, I mean, that's a little bit of progress there.
Is there a meeting Thursday night?
Uh, June twenty-ninth is the, uh, which is.
Thursday.
Thursday night, okay, is a, is a public information session, so right here in this room, so.
The developers coming back with a revised.
Well, we've already got that, but that is that zoning for review, so we've moved it along and that's the preliminary stage that we go through. A developer drops off a plan, it comes to zoning, gets reviewed in Jim's office and you guys will all get a chance to look at it.
So what's the proprietary, how, is it proper for the members of the board to show up to this Thursday night meeting? Or are we supposed to wait for a public hearing?
No, it's it's because it's informational. Um, it's out there, it's not finalized plans.
No.
You know.
It hasn't been accepted by even the redevelopment agency as like an official plan. It's just a concept plan.
The hearing.
In this room.
Yeah, we'll be at Delight this morning at seven o'clock.
Uh, I believe so.
So this is coming from Center Bridge?
No, this is informational with the redevelopment agency. That's, it's a, this is a subcommittee handling of public information and this is one of the first sessions we're gonna have. To inform the public of where we are with the stuff and now we have the grant to let people know about. So there's, you know, it's just informational.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing is being decided yet, but we're moving.
But we're gonna move it forward if we see fit, right?
Well, you guys are gonna comment on whether it meets the plan of conservation development and any obvious zoning violation concepts. That's the first review. It's very superficial.
Very, but it's, you know.
I know, but what I'm getting at is I'm I'm a friend and neighbor of.
Oh, Jeff.
The applicant. I'm wondering if this is coming from Center Bridge or if it's coming.
It's his plan.
It's his plan.
It's his plan. That's what's been laid in our lap and it's been moved on to zoning, because that, every plan has to be reviewed by zoning. Zoning has to actually send a letter back to us stating whether it.
That the concept meets the.
Meets, so it's the preliminary idea that we don't wanna even look any farther if it obviously doesn't meet.
Right.
Overall standards.
Yeah.
So.
What are your thoughts on uh, talking to an attorney about me recusing myself from this?
I think it's pretty clear. You just said he's a friend and neighbor of yours, you know, that that familiarity enclosed us. Go bear hunting or do something, you know.
About a similar situation, because eventually whatever redevelopment approves, I'm on redevelopment, so that's gonna come before zoning. So, I mean, on this informational thing, I'll be there, but not representing zoning or anything, but. You need, you need reports from the redevelopment agency to know what's going on a little bit and that's what I'm.
You have a bigger case of not not having to recuse yourself, because we went through this in Haddon. Because the guy was on the recreation committee. He was also on the planning agency for recreational fields. And one of the neighbors went and came in and said, no, no, you you're you're putting that field next to me and you need to recuse yourself. And the court finally said, you have a small pool of volunteers to do stuff. Yes, some of them are gonna be on several committees. Is he a friend of the person who's building the field? Is he, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Is he a friend of the contractor? No.
Cool, because I don't wanna run those public hearings.
So so the judge ruled that, you know, you can be on several committees, doesn't make you biased to the decision. But that one we could run by the attorney just.
Well, we can ask, but I mean, as far as, uh, I, it's the kinda thing that usually like, for instance, in your case, you, we would be leaving the room. That's what we usually do. We don't even, we're not even there at the meeting when it comes up. In my case, I would just recuse myself from voting maybe, but, you know.
I will have to see when it gets to that point.
I I'm not at the point where I I wanna get anything approved or anything, because I haven't seen anything that I'm.
It's the perception of bias more than the actual bias that comes up at the issue.
We'll see what happens. I mean, I don't, either way, but if more of us, well, that'll give you. Uh, alternates more chance to be involved, see that?
All I thought I had to do was read the calls. Um, do we have a new coffee shop in town?
Oh, I wanted to ask you about that over there.
So let's, well, new coffee shop?
Well, I mean, they.
Container?
Yeah, what's going on? They got an open sign in the back there.
Good for them.
I know they don't have approval.
See, the 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 quick thing is that they need to come.
So this is the old school.
But do they know that, see?
Yeah, yes, they know that exactly.
Okay, they do, because they're spending money on stuff and I get a little like, holy crap, I hope they know they don't have approval.
And I talked to our EDC director today and I said, well, you go back and say, look, you know. They said they were gonna withdraw their application for the container because they wouldn't get the health district test bits that were required. Because they're adding livable space and they have a substandard septic system.
Yeah.
You need to do that. Didn't wanna do that. Uh, and if you wanna open up a business of any type. It's all permitted after a special exception review. So those are the steps. I had that conversation this morning.
Oh, okay, so so I've been looking at it.
They're open, as an art gallery or something.
It is open. You're saying that?
Well.
Word on, I have not gone.
That's exactly.
Word on the street.
So the hundred twenty dollars basically came down to, yeah, wait till you have evidence if you're gonna write a cease and desist. Till that point, it's temporary storage container.
Well, so long as they have been told that, I I thought there may be some confusion when we changed the regs, they thought they they got an approval. We changed the regs so they could apply.
There's absolutely no confusion, trust me. I've been over there several times.
All right, good, okay.
Well, are they just walking up to total line and?
Yeah, yeah.
See how far they can get?
I don't know what the problem is. I I.
I mean, you should get approval, then spend the money, you know.
Exactly. Exactly.
All right, all right, anybody else?
Yeah, the other thing too is I did a walkthrough on banner for the reconstruction of all the roads and all that.
Oh.
And it was like, yeah, every catch basin, but one is coming out.
All right.
Um, yeah, they're all gonna be cut out and, you know, redone.
Oh, because they're in bad shape now.
They, well, they left. They they left.
Yeah, no, they're in bad shape.
And and and, you know, the clouds can't miss them, so they're all coming out. Uh, and I walked through it with the contractor and WMC.
Okay, so where are they with that, uh, the the apartment, the affordable thing, is it?
Build it away.
Oh, they are working, okay.
They're uh, still working with DEP about alternative locations. And they seem to be on board Anton L and M about just giving them a final design for the approval of the septic system. Um, where they wanted to go originally was a little harder than I thought, so they moved things around and found a spot. Said they'll have a final plan approved by DEP. Uh, they still a lot of work in there. That's all studded out inside. It's not, there's no finished work.
Been a while, so I began to wonder, it's like, they started, I know, but I didn't.
No, they've been working straight through with it. You know, they've been going at it. But the roadway's gonna get done. Uh, they, the only thing they're, we told them they could start saw cutting and, you know, getting it ready for removal. Now, but uh, the engineer was gonna put together a final marked up plan.
Okay, so the multiple lawsuits up there are not affecting this?
Multiple lawsuits have all been put away to the point where they're not allowed to talk about it, either property or party. Is not allowed to talk about it. It was a court agreement.
Okay.
So.
Do they plan on getting the road in before the winter?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why they wanted this meeting, so they can find exactly what they need to do. And a lot of the places that have cracking and they're just gonna, you know, cut it all out, saw cut it out, repack it. You know, there's a section near where they put a new well in and to accommodate the state, they remove the drain. And you can see it wasn't compact because it dips down six inches for that whole section.
Oh.
And it's just gone, so. And a lot of curb replacement, because those are all wax, so we basically, and, you know, the storm basin at the bottom's gotta be renovated before.
Oh.
You know, they've let it go. It's got trees in it. So those are the type of things that are all gonna be done and finished up.
Okay, anybody with any other questions or things you wanna discuss?
Any update on the Lake Hayward subdivision?
They did not show up to my wetlands meeting. Don't know why. There was a confusion there, but I had asked them to submit a letter for extension. Mission made a vote to. Uh, deny without prejudice at nine fifteen. And at nine twenty-three, the following morning, I found out at nine twenty-three, I got a request for extension, too late. So they have to bring everything, according to Brian Curtis's, you know, letter. A lot of it was minor, but needs to be addressed. They if they don't bring it in by Monday morning. Then I'm gonna, then they have agreed to withdraw the public hearing part that we announced. But otherwise, if they do have it all there, it gives Brian time to review it and checklist it.
Okay.
But I don't know. I, they said, you know, I sent you the email on Thursday and by Tuesday you still haven't, you know. Figured they'd show up to the meeting and have the request for extension.
So the walkthrough of the property was withinland wetlands?
Wetlands, yeah. We did that last year.
Oh, really, really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Monday's a holiday.
Huh?
Monday's a holiday.
Tuesday's a holiday.
Tuesday's a holiday.
Oh, Tuesday?
Yeah, we're here.
Oh, you're here on Monday? Wow.
Yeah.
Oh, really, you're working?
Yeah.
Oh, I feel much better. Oh, yeah, you were too. I saw your truck here. Anybody, anybody else before we, uh, end the meeting?
The last, last question, just curious, um, the old Old Town, is that getting ready or are they still working on it? Nobody knows.
I have not heard anything new.
They put a sign up, or they put the base sign up.
What was the question?
What's going on with the old Old Town?
Old Town?
Tavern.
Old Town Tavern?
Yeah, Town Tavern, yeah.
There's been, I mean, they can go for other, say, can just open or they gotta come in?
No, they said the the Mexican restaurant pulled out.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, so the restaurant that was going in there pulled out?
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't know if that's something on Facebook or.
Nobody's put together a food plan for the Chatham Health District.
Oh, they gotta sign off, yeah.
They've gotta sign off.
All right, okay.
You know, if it goes from restaurant to restaurant, you know, really.
Get involved in that, yeah, okay. Get in there, yeah, okay.
No, if it's one of the permitted uses, it's that.
Uh, you came to the meeting for?
I did, um, Roxanne Albert, um, from the Millington Green area. Um, glad that you addressed the fact I came to hear what the committee had to say, because I thought you were going to go back and digest what was handed out a few weeks ago, and come back with some input, not recommendations, but the start of a talk. Um, because we talked about a subcommittee back then. And then when I was reading and watching the different committees in town, realized that you guys, you were agricultors, one of the committees wanted to put farmers on it, which I thought was not a good idea if there wasn't people on the other side that were also part of the subcommittee. I, I think that all views ought to be put on the table.
Oh, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay, so, from what I'm hearing, you're gonna remove the farmers from the subcommittee, is that correct?
Uh, I, you know, Rich made that recommendation, I think we all see that that would put a bias onto the subcommittee, so we don't need biases, that's for sure.
And one other thing that I did see from the agricultural committee, there was a gentleman on the committee that said point blank, sometimes we need to turn our head, and I don't think that that is a proper thing to say as a committee member.
Well, another opinion that.
Put that out on the table. You're a committee member to represent everybody in town, so everybody has an opinion.
Absolutely.
Agree.
So, to turn your head is not an option, regardless of what that is. It's kinda like the question that doesn't get asked, is the dumb question.
Oh.
So, um, and I'm here to volunteer, if you were gonna put farmers on the subcommittee, I would like to be part of the subcommittee. So, that's what I came down for tonight, and, uh, it looks like it goes on for another.
Oh, it, it'll go on for a while, but eventually, there'll be a subcommittee meeting that'll be held in public in a room like this, and input's gonna be taken.
That there's some opportunity here, um, versus existing farms that were in place for eons, like Balix or Cold Springs or, um, I don't know the one down by the Causeway, what, what is the name of that one?
Berry Hill.
Uh, okay, those, those farms have been in town for eons. I've been here for forty years, they've all been there. They have lots of acreage. What I don't see happening is anybody moving in, because the real estate says, ooh, here, you have a few acres for farming if you want, that doesn't make the property an actual farm because of the existing neighborhood. So, a- again, there's lots of things to look at, to put out there, to, to your point, the size of the lot. Very, very important, otherwise, you know, you're gonna have a hundred chickens on every quarter acre. You have existing laws that, or ordinance that people don't follow at all, they've, so, again, I'm here to volunteer.
Well, I mean, they'll be, it's gonna go on for a while, so, and I think everyone's opinion, whether it's turn your head or, or say no, or whatever it may be, that's all gonna be heard, and they'll be, we'll work out something, I'm sure, that no one will be pleased with, so I'm sure it'll work just fine.
It's gonna make everybody happy, right? Because everybody walks away disappointed.
If nobody's happy, we usually figure we did our job, that's usually the way it works out, but anyway, just kidding about it, but, uh, it'll be hammered out through public sessions, so. You'll get, you'll get chances.
Voice for the public.
And, and I would be happy to.
Yeah.
I'm retired and, um, looking for something to do with my time, so.
Well, we like that input.